We're muted. Stayed. Apologies to you, Stu. So, citizen comment today is going to be a little different. You have your three minutes that you can stand up and just make a presentation to the board, or you can ask questions, one question at a time for your three minutes to the board, and then the board will respond to that question if they know the answer. If they don't, they'll have to get back to you. And then you'll get another question, back and forth that way to hopefully help answer some questions to the public and better inform the public. So with that, and then we'll may or may not reserve that time at the end like we normally do. With that, we will start in chambers first. If there's anybody in chambers that wants to make citizen comment or ask questions. Up, we got one in the back. Please step forward and come to the table where we can use the mics. Did you get the stopwatch? You want me to do it? I got it.
Oh, yeah.
Please state your name for the record.
My name is Ivy Valarde. And I haven't seen you folks for a whole season, but we're entering a new season. And I'm here today because I am back, I am angrier and with more resolve than ever before over the Steve Shields Serabus Training Group gun range. I woke this morning to a Facebook posting from Steve Shields that he is holding a night vision class both Friday and Saturday night, this coming Friday and Saturday night. And in the past, he's done that until midnight to 1:00 in the morning. But he clearly states in his posting that these classes are going to go on until 2:00 in the morning. This is absolutely outrageous and inconceivable that Shields would so disregard the folks in the community he lives in to not only continue with his illegal gun range, but to hold a two-night, as he calls it, kinetic NVG class. Cost per person, $550. And he states that you are only guaranteed placement in class after payment is received. And I state that because it has been brought to my attention in conversations with Lem Pratt that there's no proof that he charges. And his website states he will conduct several night classes throughout the summer. And I've looked at his webpage, and that is a correct statement. My complaints and the complaints from other outraged neighbors have fallen on deaf ears, your deaf ears. I am certain that if any one of you or your families lived within hearing range of these gun ranges and high-powered arms, this would have been addressed a long time ago. A neighborhood is no place for this kind of business. In January of this year, I sent another written complaint to your newly hired code compliance officer, Lem Pratt. He responded with a certified letter that stated several erroneous statements, of which I'm happy to address with you. One of these statements quotes Title 24 Nuisance Code, "There needs to be at least two complaints from local owners of different parcels. Also, there has to be, quote, 'doing an act which significantly affects, injures, or endangers the comfort, repose, health, or safety of others is unreasonably offensive to the senses or obstructs or interferes with the free use of one's property.'" While the outrageous noise that comes from this gun range not only significantly affects comfort, repose, and health of every neighbor who must endure weekend after weekend, and also reduces our property value. I am in the process of listing a suite in my home, on my property, for an Airbnb. I have talked to the people at the county offices on what I need to be aware of, to follow the process and to go through it. What do you think any paying guest would think if they paid to have an escape to the country, watch deer, ramble the property, and for some peace and quiet, and instead be subject to the sounds of constant gunfire?
Thank you, ma'am. Your time is up.
I was hoping Mr. Anderson was here, because I know he has an Airbnb, and I'd like to know his thoughts on how long you could stay with an Airbnb.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is there anybody online that has public comment? Raise your hand. Unmute yourself. Being none, so we'll go back in the room. Anybody else? Public comment, questions? Step forward, state your name.
I don't have to take up too much of my three minutes. I sent an email earlier today requesting the county provide me with a code or an RCW that allows our county to amend already conditional use permits. I think my request is pretty clear. I want where you have the authority to amend a conditional use permit. Pretty simple. Okay, you should be able to get me that. Also, I have here from your consent agenda, and real quickly, if you can answer, yes or no, your consent agenda means that you all have already agreed to what's in that consent agenda, right? All the 11 items, no?
No.
No?
Not necessarily. It's generally, it's stuff that we have already discussed, but we do from time to time. There may be things on the consent agenda that we pull that we don't.
Perfect, great.
The consent agenda is at 2:55. It's when it's scheduled to be heard today and discussed.
Perfect. So on that consent agenda, you have item number eight, an agreement between Cookett County and Republic Services at the Roosevelt Regional Landfill for reimbursement of costs and fees. I'm not so concerned about that. Right away, before I run out of time, I'm asking you to pull this, pull this from your consent agenda today, because this is very concerning. On this, what little information I get, apparently the county is going to amend the conditional use permit, Cup 2006-08, for Republic. And on this, they want land. We don't know how much. Perhaps, I've requested documents, so perhaps the county can tell me how much land we're actually talking, because they give us.
Is that a question? Would you like me to answer? No?
Well, yeah. Do you know how much land they want, Dan?
None. It's airspace. It's going up.
Airspace.
So the height of trash is this, the height of trash will be this. It's not out, it's just up.
So we're just building from 1820 elevation to 2,050 in trash?
Correct.
Over 200 feet of trash.
So it's a canyon that's being filled with trash, and the height can go higher.
Okay, and they also say they want to extend their operating life from 2041 to 2130. That's quite concerning.
By lifting the amount of airspace, you can put more trash in and have longer longevity of the landfill.
Yeah. I understand that. But that's a huge agreement our county's coming into. And considering that Republic has three appeals against our county right now for taxes they owe us, I believe it totals 54.3 million, you guys need to be really concerned with what deals you're making. And this agreement is trash. It's ridiculous. You don't even have a disclosure in here that says, once these companies, these large corporations, start doing their CIPA studies and investing money, that you can't pull, if you say no, they're going to sue you. They're going to sue our county. You got us into it with UnderCanvas and with Carriager. Now you're going to get into this? It's irresponsible. It's reckless of you to go into these agreements with these corporations.
All right, we'll go back online. If anybody has questions or statements they would like to make, please raise your hand or unmute yourself. I think somebody, yep, 0088. Go ahead and state your name, please.
Yeah, this is Domer Eldred, Goldendale. And Commissioner Christopher stated at the last meeting that he would be more than willing to meet with a group or individual. And I was just wondering if he would commit to a evening meeting at 6:30 where a lot of people could attend and voice their concerns and ask questions? If we could set a time for that? And so we could get the most amount of information out to the most people.
Where were you thinking about doing this?
Well, courthouse would be fine.
I'm not opposed to it.
You would be willing to set that up where we could have an evening meeting, say around 6:30, so the people that get off at 5:00 and stuff would have time to attend?
Go ahead and keep talking. I'm going to think on this and look at my calendar while you're talking, and hopefully by the time you're done, we'll have something set up.
Well, I mean, right now, it's a floating time whenever, you know, but so we just have time to where we can advertise it and let people know that we're going to have this meeting, that we can, you know, come and the questions and concerns that they have can be at least presented to one commissioner.
How about next Tuesday at 6:00 in the chambers?
Well, I, could we make it 6:30?
About 6:00.
Okay, well, I'll, we'll see. I mean, I guess that'd work. That'd give us, that'll give us rest of the week to advertise it and have as many people as we can come, so we'll work out on that, then.
As long as it goes off in a respectful way, and nobody's screaming and yelling, I will be happy to have these monthly if you want.
Dan, that is a joke. I mean, the people in this county are not, you think, you think we're a bunch of animals or something, but you are the one that has been very disrespectful as a commissioner several times, so, you know. But I don't know what you think the people of this county are, screaming, yelling, nutcases or something, I guess. That's the way you want to present us, but that's not true. People are concerned, and they want answers, and they, you know, and the commissioners have so far have been refused to get together with the people. And I will commend you for throwing that out and being willing to face the people because there's going to be some tough questions. And I don't think there's going to be any screaming and yelling, but you're going to, you're going to be faced with some tough questions, and because people want answers what's going on in this county.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. Mr. McClure? Oh, you are right. You're right. Mr. Eldridge, next Tuesday is not going to work because I have to be at a pump storage meeting. I thought that was, bear with me, I think next Tuesday was online, was it? No, 20th. So next Tuesday won't work. How about the Tuesday after that, sir?
Okay, so give me a.
Tuesday, July 5th.
Huh?
Tuesday, July 5th.
July 5th, okay. 7:05, okay. And that'll be at 6:00?
Yep.
Okay, all right. And that will be at the courthouse chambers or at the annex?
Nope, we'll be here.
Okay. Okay, great. Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you, sir. Anybody else online have questions or comments they want to, I should have went back in the room. Let's see if anybody jumps. All right, let's go back in the room. Anybody questions, comments in the room?
Greg Wagner with CESE. I'd like to talk about the reimbursement agreement. Mr. Soder, Mr. Anderson said a few weeks ago that we get all our money back from these projects based on the reimbursement agreement. And there's three reimbursements agreements here, and they're basically the same copy, you just put in different names. They really are vague and written very poorly. They should be written by site or project-specific, so that they are detailed. An example would be the UnderCanvas, where during the hearing, UnderCanvas agreed to pay for the improvements to Oak Ridge Road. But yet, their agreement doesn't say anything about UnderCanvas covering the expenses for Oak Ridge Road. Now, it's on the six-year plan for the year 2026, for that road to be improved, which means we, the citizens, are going to pay for that road, because there's nothing in the agreement that says UnderCanvas will pay for it. And that's indicative of all these, all these agreements. They're the same. If you look at the Lund Hill project for Aurora Solar Avengrid, their agreement, and I have copies of the bills that went out to them and the paid receipts, all they paid for was legal notices in various papers and postage. There were no county staff time, there was nothing billed for Lund Hill Solar Project. And many hours were provided by county workers for Lund Hill. Planning, fire, solid waste, all the various departments. They had people that worked on that project, as they have worked on UnderCanvas or any of these other projects. It also says projects over $1 million will be billed. None of that's, none of that's been done. So this is, however many hundreds of thousands of dollars of lost revenue to the county, because this doesn't cover all the bases it needs to cover. You know, this, this is really just a failure from top to bottom, that you rely on this agreement, but it doesn't do anything. And then if the workers don't keep track of their time and bill these corporations, they don't receive a bill, they don't pay anything. So it's a failure right here at the county level not to build these corporations. The county has no problem building us citizens for our taxes and everything else. Why are these corporations allowed to get by with this? So that's a question. Any answer for that?
I will have a, if I could ask a clarifying question of you. When you're talking about the agreements, the three agreements, are you referencing, are those the reimbursements agreement to process their permits?
Well.
Or are you, because when you're referring to UnderCanvas and Oak Ridge Road, those agreements cover us reimbursing our cost to process their permits, not conditions of approval with a project. So, and you are correct that our, they were billed, and I'm using your reference, they were billed for postage and stuff. That was to notice the, the public hearings when they had, those are legitimate costs, that they need to pay those costs. As far as staff time, you are correct. We did not build them, we haven't built anybody, and that was, we have actually changed that policy. And now we are, employees, if they're working on a project, are actually now keeping track of every hour, thanks to you, so that's good, as far as, but that, that will actually be uniformly applied across everybody now, as far as, and so everyone will get a bill for the hours worked towards that. But as far as the corporations were not given some special circumstance, that was, nobody was being billed for staff time, because our tax dollars are already paying for the staff. But we will consistently apply that. But as far as like building improvements or road improvements, those aren't not ever intend, those agreements are for the cost for the processing of a permit, not the conditions of approval.
So who ends up paying for Oak Ridge Road if you don't have an agreement with UnderCanvas that covers?
It was a condition, and I'm doing this from memory, which is very dangerous when I am quoting, because, but as I recall, one of the conditions of approval that the hearings examiner put in was any improvements that have to do with Oak Ridge Road pertinent to this project, they are responsible for those.
And there is a county document somewhere that.
It's in their approval from, it's, there was also, I don't know, 50, 60 conditions in those. It has the same, all of those have to be complied with.
Well, you know, I go back to when you and Mr. Anderson said we get all our, all our costs back.
Well, I would, I would question that as far as if you're, that's your, you're stating that.
Well, I remember what was said, that we get all our money back because we have a reimbursement agreement. So when you say that, I think, you know, the road and everything else, well, that's a cost to the county if the road's going to get improved. So, all right, well, that's, that's what I wanted to talk about. The other fact is that Sherry says, why doesn't the county have a disclaimer so that when these corporations come in and spend millions of dollars on different studies like these solar companies do, that protects the county, that these corporations can't say, we invested all this money, now you have to permit us? Because that's, you've said that before, they even said it at the DNR meeting last week.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Your time is up. Anybody else online have public comment or have questions they want to ask the Board of Commissioners? Anybody else in the room have comment or come forward?
Can't he make a sense? And I just have one question. Is the Republic landfill, are they being allowed to take the windmill blades after they're done and dispose of them? And also the solar panels? Is that where all this trash is going to go? Do you know?
I don't, I don't believe the answer's yes, but that's a, you'd have to ask them. It's a private business, but I don't believe they take either.
So I'd have to go directly to their corporation?
Yeah, it's a private business. It's not, I don't set policy for Republic.
Okay.
Does the county have no oversight on what Republic sends in their landfill?
No. Republic has, as a condition of their approval, they have certain classes of waste that they're allowed to take. I just don't, I think we don't know where these fit in that. Like, they cannot take hazardous waste. They're not, that landfill is not rated for that kind of, that's like even when we have, like contaminated soils, if they get to a certain level, they can't go to Roosevelt, they have to go to a landfill that is designated for that purpose, which.
Like Arlington.
Like Arlington. And so like our contaminated soil at that level goes to Arlington, it doesn't go to Roosevelt. So we don't know, I don't know what solar panel waste, where it fits in the category, if it is an allowed use, or meaning if the waste would be eligible to be disposed of there, it could be disposed of there. We would have no say of that. I just don't know what the category of it is. Or wind turbine blades, I don't know.
They're licensed by the government on what they can take and how they can take, that's not set by us.
Right.
Either the state or the Fed.
Oh, the state is.
Again, this is a good question for Republic, because they would be able to answer the question that has to do with Republic. They would be able to tell you that it's the state that gives them their permit, or it's the Fed that gives them their stuff. I, I'm, small town, I don't control, you know, Republic's business operations. Ma'am, your time is up. It's your turn. I don't know. You have to ask Republic.
It's going to.
Well, do you know are blades hazardous waste? Yes or no? Well, then why don't you know?
Why is it my job?
It isn't mine either.
It isn't mine either.
It's my time.
Yes, thank you. Yes.
And you have to cut them in half and shove them together, and you have to dig a hole and dispose them that way. Are you going to give them land, county land, to do that?
You're going to take a look.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else have public comment? Anybody online? See none? Anybody back in the room?
No.
She's thinking about it over there, though. Anybody online going again? All right, 1:25. You have any comments you'd like to make about anything we haven't already covered?
I would miss Busque. The, I would reference that as far as in the consent agreement. That agreement is about, is a reimbursement agreement to cover the costs for Republic's conditional use permit amendment. That has nothing to do with whether it's just for us, again, we're being told we need to recover those costs. They have every right to apply for an amendment. This just is that they will, they have every right, just as you do, to apply for an amendment to a conditional use permit. That does not, ma'am, this is, ma'am, this is my time. Yeah, and if it's, it's, if it's a public record, we'll get it to you. There's, of course. But they, like anybody else, this reimbursement agreement doesn't have anything to do with whether by signing this agreement, it grants an amendment. All this does is ensure that any cost that we have that is associated with processing their request to have that, we're going to get reimbursed for. Or, no, I suppose, in your, in your world, we have to come and ask you first if it's okay for us to process this. So do you, should we do this or not?
No, I don't think you should. It's a bad agreement. There should be a disclosure.
About what? That we shouldn't get our costs reimbursed for looking at this permit application? Okay. All right, this is, this is, get off your soapbox, please, ma'am. Please, ma'am, ma'am. Well, you know, we had a filing week about three weeks ago. People could have stepped up. Why, why are you, filing week for public office so that you could do these jobs? I didn't see your name anywhere. I have been doing my job, ma'am.
This is why.
We don't do this.
We don't do this, and this is why amongst all the requests for town halls has been told no, because people can't have the common courtesy to allow the other person to speak without interrupting them and shouting them down. That is not a conversation. That is, your opinion matters and the others doesn't. So we will see when I have this other town hall that you guys are having, whether I'm allowed to answer the question, or whether I'm going to get shouted down because you don't like the answer. If it's shouted down, it will be the only one I do.
This, this is agreement, item number eight, that is why I was correcting. It is a reimbursement agreement for us to recover our costs to look.
At the permit.
At the permit.
Right, and then now you've gone into an agreement and then.
We've agreed to nothing, only to get reimbursed. I don't know what you don't understand about this.
This is not giving them a permit for more airspace.
No, it just gives them grounds to sue our county.
I don't know how you see that, but I, you have grounds to sue our county by walking in the building. You could trip coming up the stairs and sue the county. I don't know, you know, if I deny their permit, I'm sure they can sue the county. They have a conditional use permit. They have a conditional use permit.
Okay. Let's move along, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we're going to move along. That will be the last one of these, but I think we do for a while. It was an experiment.
It was. Thank you for trying.
I tried. I tried. I, I was hoping it wouldn't turn into a debate and it would be questions, but it turned into a debate. Um, we have one minute left. Go ahead. Uh, no, he moved. We now have a man named George Zindejas, same location up there. He just started last week, so he's new and getting up to speed on all of the old stuff and kind of trying to learn his job as it goes. George, George Zindejas. Hopefully I didn't butcher the pronunciation. Uh, but he's right upstairs in the, in the planning department if he is in the office today. With that, we will move on. 1:30, public hearings bid openings. Come forward. It's you.
It's you, Denise.
Oh, yeah, I said half of it and not the other half. So this is a public meeting to consider approval of a short plat number SPL 2019-23. Um, I will let our staff give all the pertinent details.
Okay, um, the applicant is Kinsey's Country Place LLC. SPL 2019-23 is a proposal to create four lots from parcel 03101400001700. The proposed short plat is located in the White Salmon vicinity. And the administrative review of the short plat has been completed. Signatures have been obtained from the road health and planning departments, including the treasurer's office. All conditions attached to preliminary approval have been met. If the board finds it's in the public's interest to approve the short plat, a motion needs to be made granting final approval of SPL 2019-23. Applicant Kinsey's Country Place LLC.
Did you have any questions or anything?
Seemed fine to me.
Nope, I didn't see anything either.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to grant final approval to short plat SPL 2019-23. Applicant Kinsey Country Places LLC.
I will sit down and second the motion. Any discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, ma'am. So now we're up to adult probation and we're running 15 minutes early. Got any board pending over there to kill some time or have a few things? I guess some of these we probably should wait for Commissioner Anderson on. No, I was kind of thinking, since our SBA specialist kind of was wanting to know where to go from here on the childcare part of it. And I know the county doesn't have any money. So whatever she comes up with is kind of a pipe dream. But I thought maybe it might be a good opportunity to have her reanalyze the, the building over there and the childcare thing over there to at least to give us or future boards an idea on the cost to provide childcare to our staff. Say, take that building, split it in half so that we can use half of it for mental health if we so choose. The other half of it would be childcare. Again, you wouldn't be at 92, you'd be at 40.
Right.
Um, but again, if we were just dealing with our staff with realistic rates, what we would be charging our staff, so then we would know what kind of subsidy that would be involved. I think that would give this board some, maybe some good numbers going forward if we ever win lottery or something.
Yeah, I like that idea because I do think the, we may not be able to fix the global problem, but maybe we can work on our piece of it, our piece of it. And I think that fixes the outside space because that was already going to be a problem with that 92 folks, like there's, there's not enough land for that, but if it was 40, like you say, then there would be. And so, yeah, I think that would be.
Just have her work maybe with, or at least get some input from our public health department on how much space in that building.
For mental health services.
Potentially may end up going in there if we end up starting a mental health.
We don't go the dollar 48 a month route.
So, okay. Do you think I should talk to her now or should I bring this back up when Commissioner Anderson's here and?
I think there's.
Just send her?
She's looking for.
That's, that's two, that's two yeses. That's what it counts. Also, this one, I probably will wait until he does get back, but I want to send you home thinking about it. Potentially as we go through the economy issues we have and gas prices that we have, we need to sit down and really discuss the option of some departments being able to do four day work weeks or potentially work from home two of those four days, depending on whatnots.
Right.
So think about that one and we'll bring that one back up when Commissioner Anderson is back in present. Uh, the other one was Dallas Port Park designation.
That was on mine.
I'm fine with signing that today. Cause I don't know if Mr. Anderson would sign it next week anyway or the week after. Uh, but I don't know if you want to leave it, sit around for two weeks and then we can bring it back up when he gets back. It's fine with me too.
Um, I'm fine, like I'm supportive of it, but I think it should, I, I think it should go through the public process. Meaning we put it on our agenda for, I'm fine with next week and just do that. I would be fine with that.
Okay.
I did have a question or I wanted, since during board pending, I did meet with some of them last week, Thursday night on my way, way home. They are doing kind of a formal survey and then they have gotten someone they believe that's going to put together a kind of graphic of kind of what they're thinking about fitting on that site to give to us.
So they're going to do some kind of blueprinting even before they get a planning grant?
Yes. They want to do something. And so I'm like, if you want to sketch some stuff out, then knock yourself out. So, um, so I wanted to report that. And then I do need to, now that Jeff is back, I need to go have a discussion with him about the planning grant and what is the, I don't know when the deadlines for, for RCO grant submittal is. And then what, kind of what the requirements are.
We.
Cause we're the owner, so I think we have to be the applicant.
Yeah, you would be, you would be the signers on that one. We would be the signers on that one. That's kind of rather than having.
And where? Yeah.
Maybe we should just have one conversation and, and have a presentation before us next week after public works for 15 minutes and is that?
Yeah, maybe we can let Jeff know we want to talk about the RCO grant process so he can just.
And he doesn't have to say it twice.
Yeah.
Cause I talked to him two or three weeks ago and he says the grant's not even going to be out and available until like 4th of July, 1st of July. So, but I don't know if any of that's changed.
Okay.
If we're in the same room, then.
Yeah, that would be better.
We get the same answers.
Okay.
So that's my thinking. Anyway, what else, sir? Any update on Dallas Port Reef Water P U negotiations?
No, there's no negotiations right now, other than I did, um, board chair did reach out and asked after our discussion, kind of what are, and I informed him. My recollection was that the board is, wants to, before really making any decisions about the future, wanted to be able to go to the community, have a community meeting, get some input from the community as far as, you know, is the county keeping this in the, in the term? Kind of have the discussion with him about, here's the, kind of give him the facts as far as here's the rates, here's the.
What they need to be.
Here's what they need to be and to have that. And so he did say, okay, that's good. Do you want us to be there? And so, um, when we schedule that, let them know the board chair and the operations guy would be there to answer if we want them there. He didn't know as far as technical questions about the operations of.
Makes sense, even though you really are kind of separate entities, it makes sense that they would be there.
I mean, they're the operator.
And I don't know, um, if this is something you potentially want off the books by your term. And if so, I would.
Yeah, I'm fine with, I, I, let's go ahead and schedule a public meeting down there of the full board. And, you know, give some time as far as, because there'll be a big turnout of folks.
Where do you usually have your big meetings down there at the school?
No, not, it's at the community center.
A community center fits that many people, huh?
Yeah.
Breathing room only?
Yeah, I mean, because Dallas Port, the community's not that, so even, you know, if 10% of the population comes, they'll fit in that room. It's full. We've had the.
It gets warm.
It gets warm in there, but that's what I would look at our calendars to see and give ample time for the, do the advertising and, and go ahead and have it. And because I think, yes, I would like to, at least while I'm still here, kind of get, be a part of that conversation about what.
Well, and I, I look at it as not only that, is, is going through the process, we're going to need some of your historical knowledge and it would be easier to do while you're here than while you're gone. So.
Right. Although I will commit, I'm not moving, dying or leaving, that I know of.
That you know of.
So I would be, I, I won't not return a phone call for information.
Won't not.
You might, won't not.
I'm not sure that's proper English.
I don't really care, although I'm sure I'll get, I'll get schooled on that as well.
Alrighty, you're next.
We're running ahead, so we were filling, we were filling dead airspace, so.
We're only three minutes early. We are at 1:45, which is adult probation officer Courtney Cook.
So our office is very busy right now. In running our numbers, comparing them to March's numbers, we are 43 more cases.
Wow.
Yeah. It's still just Steve and I. Uh, he's got about 103 cases he's monitoring. I am running at 90. Little difficult to complete everything in the day.
So, uh, what's driving the, I mean, are the courts just assigning more probation? Are there?
Not necessarily one way or the other. I think it's just, the criminal system is always in kind of a up and down.
You're hoping you're on a peak.
Well, maybe. The weather's getting better, so sometimes that's a, creates an influx of, of numbers. Uh, it just kind of depends. It's really hard to say one way or another, like what triggers it. Uh, you would think like during holidays, people would get into more trouble. And they may, but we may not see it right away.
But there's probably a lag.
There's a process through the court system that it has to go through.
What is the average length of time that somebody's put on probation?
Typically, um, so misdemeanors are typically on for 24 months, up to 24 months. Uh, gross misdemeanors up to five years. So they have, that's our max kind of jurisdiction that we can see them. But, uh, in the district courts, we always get them off of active probation as soon as possible. So it's up to the client. So however long.
Everything harsher than that goes through Department of Corrections is?
Correct. Anything post conviction out of Superior Court has to go through Department of Corrections. Yeah. So we always tell people, you know, the sooner you get, get to taking care of these conditions, the sooner you get off of active supervision with us. Cause then they can go to bench probation and we don't have to check in with them. They just have to stay out of trouble. So, but if some people like to drag it out and that's what it is.
I'm just doing my research for myself potentially, so. Of course, what I'm contemplating, it would, yeah, it would be a DOC supervision.
Oh, really? Go bigger, go home.
Although I suspect there's not a jury in this county that would convict me. Okay, sorry.
Oh, you're fine. So since my last report, we've absorbed a new, new position, the litter crew supervisor, that's working out really great. Uh, she's running crew, adult crew twice a week and a juvenile crew once a week at 10 hours a day. And then one day a week for five hours, she's in the office doing paperwork, which is scheduling, data entering, calling individuals to get them on crew. So she's maxing out her 35 hours a week doing all and only litter crew at this time. We've also collaborated with the Washington State Department of Corrections. And you'll be seeing an interlocal agreement this afternoon on the consent agenda so that we can accept referrals from Department of Corrections onto the litter crew. So sometimes they'll get transfer cases from a different state. And it could be misdemeanor cases from a different state. And they, maybe they have community service to do. DOC, because they're now supervising them, to get them on our litter crew, has to have an interlocal agreement. There's no fees whatsoever attached to that.
The question I had on that is because it was Department of Corrections, are they harsher prisoners? I mean, most of the, the people we take out on our litter control are, you know, social butterflies. They're fairly harmless. They've just done some stupid things. You deal with the Department of Corrections, you could be dealing with gang bangers to, you know, pedophiles to whatever.
Potentially, yeah.
Do all of those same people that are on Department of Corrections, it's not like they have a, I guess I'd say it's like our jail, you know, the, the good prisoners get litter pickup or kitchen duty. The bad guys, no, we don't trust you with that. So does the DOC let their, their bad guys out on litter patrol too, or is it only the mild?
Not typically. So if they, it, it kind of depends on the situation, like what the court order says. So if the court order is allowing them to do litter crew, I would imagine there's not that threat of escaping, uh, you know, of not doing it necessarily. Uh, if they have reason to believe that they, you know, their lengthy history, most likely they're not going to offer litter crew. They're going to say, no, it's going to be jail time.
And I would imagine you would have the authority that if, if you do get one that's acting up or whatever, you can always call DOC and say, okay, we're not taking this guy anywhere.
Absolutely. So we have full discretion on whether or not, if we're looking at the criminal history, because we do criminal history checks on everybody that gets on to our litter crew before they're even on. And we could go through it, do kind of do a screening process. And, um, the supervisor knows that if at any time with our district court clients and/or our DOC client referrals, there's, if they're uncomfortable, they cannot let them on crew and return it and will, the POs will address it from there on out. Um, and DOC is perfectly happy to readdress it and take it back to court.
Are there any youths on DOC?
Are they what?
Are there any youth on that? I mean, it would be a rare.
DOC does not handle juveniles. No.
Not at all.
Nope, that's all with the county juvenile department handles, you know, like truancy to, to felonies. Uh, they handle all ranges, whereas, um, Washington's one of the only states, um, that handle, that separates their probation from parole and district court probation. So if you go across the river to Oregon and you get placed on probation, you got probation officers that are dealing with, um, crimes, you know, offenders that have crimes of murder to all the way down to a DUI or a simple assault. They're handling them all.
All the way down to a DUI.
It is, in my book, it is up there, definitely. Uh, but from, going down from a misdemeanor all the way up to Class A. It is, in my book, it is up there, definitely. But from, going down from a misdemeanor all the way up to class A felony. Yeah.
Good to know.
So let's see here. We are going to be, we are ready to ask for, I was looking around to see if Judge Hanson was. It was my understanding Judge Hanson was going to be here. And I do believe Judge Baker is on remotely. It is that time to ask for a verbal approval and authorization to open the position of chief probation officer and with the understanding that our current funding in our budget is not there to support that. Now, we'll just remind you, it would have been there had Larry had not taken on juvenile and adult at the same time during that merge back in 2016, I think it was. It would have been there. It was removed because his funding for both of those came out of juvenile. That funding to support the chief PO is, was never replaced.
Okay. So I'm going to need some math with that whole thing. Do you want to be the math person, or do you want to have one of those HR people be the math person? Of what we were paying to what we are paying, or what we're proposing to pay, is there two now, you know, Larry positions at Larry pay levels, or is there only?
So I know that the juvenile administrator gets a, has a, is on a pay scale, pay grade. And I, it's not the same as what the chief probation officer.
So is, are, is this position going to have any oversight over that position?
Absolutely not. They're completely separate. So the juvenile department is under the direct supervision of the Superior Court Judge. The chief probation officer for district court is under the direct supervision of the district court judges only. So that would be Judge Hanson and Judge Baker.
You gotta jump to the mic.
So other people can hear you. Come on up.
You have to come on down. You're the next contestant. You have three minutes, ma'am.
Use it wisely.
Whatever you want to say for three minutes.
No, so those two positions were always kept separate, even though they were filled both by Larry in the past. So the, the box for the chief probation officer was always within the adult probation department. He just got a stipend for doing those duties in addition to being the juvenile administrator. But the funding was taken away, or not, it, it just wasn't funded because he just received that $1,000 stipend, I think, monthly.
Casey, could you get a little closer to the mic? It's hard to hear you.
Or pull the mic closer to you. There's a little bit of cord there. She's talking, can you hear Jake?
Oh, I can hear you.
No, I was just saying that the duties, both positions were kept within the departments. It's just that Larry was filling both positions and doing duties as both, but they were, they were kept separate in the org charts and the FTEs and the boxes. So, so the chief probation officer was still an FTE within the adult probation department. It just wasn't funded while Larry was filling both. He just received a stipend. And the stipend, yes, was funded through the adult probation.
So is this going to add a spot on the org chart, or is this adjusting a current employee to that position?
It's, the, the position is already there. It would just be adding the funds to fill that position.
The difference between what they're making now versus what that position?
Is there a person in, so you would be hiring another person, or not?
He hopes not.
No, I'm.
That would be, well, that would be up to the, the judges at this point. I feel the need eventually that, for the county to look at, maybe next budget year, dependent on whether or not the county is able to get city contracts to fund for probation services to, to refill any other openings at that time. Because we're running such high numbers right now and there's only so many hours in the day.
Right. But what you're requesting now is just to fully fund the positions that are already staffed at the level that they're supposed to be at, meaning the, the compensation at the level.
But you have four employees in your department right now, correct?
Yes.
You're only going to have four employees when we say yes.
Correct.
Two probation, one office, one litter pickup.
Right.
Right.
Is that Rob talking in the back?
Yeah.
Can't hear a word he says.
You're supposed to be gone anyway.
Yeah, we, we actually don't know who you are.
I am gone.
So people.
But I still care.
Flying on his Zoom right now, so. Is it on?
The judge has joined us, I see.
The current, the current structure for adult probation is the chief probation officer and then two proba-
One.
One probation officer.
Right.
Or one case manager, a clerical, and then now the litter crew supervisor.
And, and you're, you're proposing to make one of them higher, not add a new person at this time?
At this time, correct, yes.
Yep, I was always clarifying.
If I'm, if, and I'm from the, the information that was in our packet, so we always understood that the litter grant did not fully fund the litter supervisor, that there was a gap.
Correct.
That we have not, and that, this is part of that, isn't that, aren't we sort of addressing all of the funding issues or not? Or that's going to be in that later supplemental that was referenced?
It will definitely be in the supplemental budget request in August, for sure, because there's a number of things that we're asking.
This will be one of them too.
Yes.
Oh, so I see. So you're getting permit, so we're not, it's like, because if we're, if we're committing to dollars, I want to commit, I want to be done not like asked today and then in September, it's another, and then.
Everything should be.
So what you gave there was, is what, is everything that's in that supplemental?
Yes.
So there was two case managers budgeted, correct?
Currently, there's two case managers budgeted.
So the money they'll need to cover the chief probation officer, if one of those positions applies, will be the delta between what the chief probation officer costs and what the case manager was budgeted at. That's one scenario.
Correct. Yes.
Alright, so the three pots of money we're really looking at is fully funding litter pickup, fully funding the position you're talking about and making up for the
Colas and the.
Interesting math of the last bunch.
Correct.
She's not asking for that today. That's a supplemental request.
Right, right. But that's the only three things she's asked for so far.
One more thing. Want to go, want to move on to that? Okay. So.
You better get the, you better get the verbal on there first.
Oh, so can I get the verbal authorization? I will remain silent.
The, the verbal on that one, I'm a yes.
I'm a yes.
Mr. Anderson, are you still there? Are you a yes or no, or do you want to partake in the vote? I'm hearing nothing. So move forward.
Two, two out of three is all it takes, so.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. So our current database program is a Microsoft Access.
Oh, yes, there's the other one, yeah.
So we.
Something was nagging at me, that's what it was.
So I brought to you a discussion about it.
Yes.
And you wanted comparables. So I did do some comparables. And going with Tyler Technologies, which is the cur, which is the current agency that's creating the statewide system, does not benefit us at all in the end. We're still going to have to do a data conversion, which is going to cost tens of thousands of dollars. If we were to jump on early. Yeah. I don't think they will. They're covering everything else after 2026. But so in the meantime, we, we propose and request a verbal authorization to move forward in considering signature on the agreement with Probateum Technologies. Now, they do not charge any setup costs. It is simply $50 a month per user. That's for, our assist is for four users. And that will allow us to have all of our client information into that web-based program. I've already had IT look over it. They've agreed to it, said it looks good. Prosecutor's office has reviewed on the, the agreement. And we believe that that will cover us and work for our department between now and 2026. So when, when we get to the point where we're ready to phase into the statewide system, there's no opt-out costs. They understand that we're only going to be on with, you know, if we went with probate them with them till 2026. And then this AOC of Washington is going to pick up the cost of this, of the database systems from there on out.
But, and this is replacing the legacy system that you're currently the Larry system?
Yes. And IT says that they cannot fix any errors. If it locks up and creates errors, we lose all of our data on the clients, all of our notes, which we use to go to court and.
Although the judge doesn't care.
We can't go on memory anymore. So it's very, it's a very valuable tool, unless you want us to go back to pen and paper, which isn't beneficial either, because that can be lost.
I haven't seen such a big price difference between the vendors.
It is substantial.
It was, she was insane. So I was, I mean, was one offering, you know, the Rolls Royce package that all these things that we weren't really going to use, or any idea why there was such a big difference between the packages?
Um, not really, other than, you know, the law base, you know, their target audience are lawyers. And their, their user, user per month fee is similar to what probateums is, but they were setting, their setup costs were substantial because they, you had to create this like platform. Whereas probate is, is for probation work. And in talking with other probation departments that use probate them, they really like them. It seems to work for, you know, for them and what they need. There's definitely going to be some change for us and how it looks and how we use it. But it's, we're going to have to go through that anyways, no matter what program we go with.
Judge came down and had a seat. Does he want to say anything, or is he just, nope, she got it.
He has it nailed, pretty much. I apologize for being late. I had it down at 2 o'clock. Is that, we start earlier, am I late?
You know, when you're late to court, that's contempt, sir.
Yeah.
It's litter pickup.
Yeah, he'll be like, yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, we're feeling a little angry today.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was cranky.
Um, yeah, I, I thumbs up on that one.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I think it's, it's.
Help you do your job better.
Cheap, relatively speaking. That's, my only concern was, again, the difference between where, sometimes if it's too good to be true, it is, but.
Well, we actually got to do a 30-day trial period with probate them and use their system, which was really neat.
Okay.
It's kind of nice to be able to kind of open up multiple client folders at the same time, because a, a lot of times we get interrupted in the middle working on notes or dealing with something, you know, oh, we got to deal with this person. The current system doesn't allow us to easily go in and out of a system. Especially if you're working remotely. The current database program is super slow and it bogs down and it takes forever to log into a client folder. This system is going to go a lot faster based on your internet speed because it's all web-based.
Are you going to have to rebuild from start, or are they going to be able to transfer some of that legacy document into their hub?
We will have to input each new, each client one by one, unless we pay for somebody, you know, for them a hefty amount to do a data conversion, where we say, okay, this is our current program, put everything into that system.
I guess my, my only concern is in that legacy system, maintaining documents for the standard amount of time needed by law. If that crashes, do we have the documents?
Well, my, my plan is to have, we can print off all the notes for each one of those clients. Currently, the records retention is three years for probation cases from the time that they're closed out. So we were going to start from newest to, newest to oldest and inputting it into a new system and then, and then deleting them from the old system as they get morphed into the new system.
You're on it. You got it handled.
Knowing that we don't have the budget currently. And you're, everybody's in agreeance? Yeah? Wonderful.
Take your, take your yeses and leave while you can.
Take your four yeses.
I can move forward. Wonderful, thank you.
No, we're not setting a trend. Don't think this is, I'm out of yeses today.
Yes, I understand.
I see him scheming back there. Sharon's like, oh. Not yet, I'm not, yeah, okay.
And any questions on our caseload numbers? I mean, I talked a little bit about it, where, where our numbers have increased since March.
Well, now, if I, now that the judge is here, maybe earlier question as far as what do you think's driving, are you just, you know, just or it's just, that's what she said.
She's a good soul.
Just the way, it's just ebbs and flows.
It does. And a lot of it depends on what the prosecutors recommend, you know, sometimes they want, it seems like they want more people on that supervision or pre-trial monitoring or something, and sometimes they got.
And it depends on the client too, you know, whether or not they're, you know, maybe got pulled over for a DUI and their breathalyzer is extremely high, that's a concern.
Judge Baker, I see you online with your hand raised. Do you have some input for us? I see you unmuted yourself, but I do not hear you. There's no audio, sir. I'm not seeing anything. He unmuted the mic, but there's no audio. Nope, now he's back to mute it again. Well, if you get it to work, feel free to unmute yourself and speak up and we'll know that you have it working.
He's reserving us three minutes or later.
One question I had for, for you was, where are we at with the city contracts? And whose kind of responsibility is that?
Commissioner Anderson is in charge of that. Commissioner Anderson, do you have an update on where we at with the city contracts? Somewhere over Utah, I think, is where we're at with that. Not unmuting himself, so we don't know until he's unmuted or back.
Sorry, were you talking to me?
Yes, sorry, sir. Could you give Courtney an update on where we are with the city contracts?
Last time still waiting is on the City of White Salmon to get us back their information on what they think would be fair. And then we can go from there. I've had preliminary conversations with the new city manager for Goldendale. And hopefully when I get back, I'll be sitting down with everybody and nashing this out.
Okay, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
I believe that's it for, for me.
I'm just eye candy.
I love that. That's a good answer. I'm going to steal that later, just so you know. Alrighty, well, thank you guys.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Judge. Thanks, Courtney.
Thank you.
We're a smidgen early and Gordy's here. Were you here for, oh, got it.
That's Sharon's backup. That's Sharon's backup.
Her muscle, her hired muscle. Are we ready for Sharon? We're ready for Sharon, I think. Come on down. Gordy, if you're going to talk, you have to come down too.
So, um, on, Ben, the City of Benjen and the City of White Salmon have gone in, so Go4th is actually the main applicant for the ZAP grant. And the City of Benjen, City of White Salmon had, basically are providing a car space. So it's, it's a electric vehicle ride-share program that there's funding currently with WashDOT for under the ZAP. And I can't remember what that stands, it has to do with electric vehicles and lowering emissions and that. So they have some specific funds for that. And they submitted applications to do a vehicle in White Salmon and vehicle in Benjen. And so I was talking with Go4th further about this about, and they were wondering about doing one for Goldendale, having a vehicle available and where that is interested, not only, I guess, on the transit side in terms of public transportation, but we're also interested in it in the social service side of my department with senior services with our meal deliveries and volunteer drivers that we use to take people to appointments and things like that, was what they've shown with a couple of, there's been a, a project in St. Louis that Go4th has where they used, they're using some of the electronic ride-share vehicles where volunteers can use those for transporting people to medical appointments. And having that benefit, you know, of not using, you know, a lot of gas and access to another vehicle that's basically insured and maintained by kind of another entity that it could be appealing for somebody to volunteer drive for us with the ability to use that car share service because they can prioritize use. We could book out use for that for a particular volunteer. And I feel like that would be a benefit to our program in terms of encouraging some folks to volunteer their time.
Let me ask a question, mister. How, how would that work? Because now your, your ride volunteers get reimbursed mileage
Yeah.
For the use of their own vehicle. So if they're using the electric vehicle?
So they would still, they would still be eligible to get like a mileage reimbursement for the miles they're traveling, but they're, they would rent the ride-share vehicle. So there is a rental fee involved in it.
Okay, that's, that's the piece I was missing. Because I'm like, you want to give me a free car and I drop?
Yeah, no.
I'll give you a
Yeah, if we were providing the car, then they wouldn't, but they would still get reimbursement, but it would be at a more, likely a more affordable rate, especially if they were doing more involved, you know, rides, quite a number of rides around in a period of time. So, so the, the way it works with Go4th and so, and then what the ask would be, you know, for Clickata County is that they would be, you know, the, the prime applicant for the program. They do what they would ask for, because that was my question, was okay, well, what do you, what money, what support, what are you at? So obviously letters of support for the project, but where they're, what they would be looking at is us providing them with a designated parking spot in that's, that would be, you know, visible, accessible, so people are aware of that. And that parking spot would, they would also, they would install, you know, a, a charging station in that spot. So I had talked to Gordy about if there, you know, is there even, you know, I know parking is an issue right now. We're not talking about this being immediately available either. But what would we be looking at? What would, would there be the ability to do that? Because they obviously need the dedicated parking space so people know where to go to get the vehicle and it can be maintained in terms of charging and cleaning, so.
Is this the same idea as those little green rental scooters in Portland where people just, you know, book the scooter, pay for it with their card?
Yeah, well, so
Drop it off where they want. I mean, I guess, is there going to be county responsibility if somebody rents the car and drives it into the boat ramp?
No, so that's where Go4th, it's, it's, Go4th is the, is the entity that takes that responsibility for it. We're just, we would be providing, the request from us would be to provide the parking spot that has, and then the, the area for them to have the charging station with that spot. And then obviously, marketing it, encouraging use of it, making sure people are aware of it. But they handle all the insurance, the cleaning, that, because that's actually within the grant request. So like the grant requests that they have for the two vehicles, there's one in Benjen, one in White Salmon. And WOGAP is involved in terms of supporting it because they're wanting to make it accessible to, uh, uh, low-income communities or people that have, you know, less access to a vehicle. Because the hourly rate is four dollars to reserve it for an entire hour or thirty-five dollars for a day. So it is, there is a credit card, an electronic, you know, you can reserve it all electronically. You, you have to join as a member because they do do a vehicle record check. You got to have your driver's license ID, but they cover all the insurance, the maintenance of the vehicles, the cleaning of the vehicle. They also have a twenty-four-hour response if there's an issue with the vehicle, so if something, if it breaks down or something like that.
Thirty-five dollars a day, that's cheaper than my gas bill.
They can respond.
I know, I'm like, I can provide a parking spot.
Yeah. Well, and one of the pieces that, with the support for the two vehicles on, in the White Salmon and Benjen one was even to say, oh, well, the cities are looking at maybe having, you know, city employees be able to use it if they're having to run errands out to somewhere, they could reserve the vehicle. Getting, they definitely want to show use of the vehicle and so, and the general public, obviously.
So you're not doing any scheduling then? You would have to, if you want your driver to use it, they would do it?
We don't, we would have, the, our driver, like if, if it was one of our volunteers, they would
Be their option.
They would have to, they have to register in the system and be their own. We're just saying that would be an option that might be appealing for a driver to, to use.
I'm going to say, if all I got to do is come up with a parking spot, to have one up here as well, that sounds interesting.
Yeah, and so that's where kind of the letters and the, the support coming from, I don't remember if it was Benjen or White Salmon, was putting in, okay, what's the value of that parking space? I think they said it was like sixty-two fifty a month, you know, for year, to determine a, an in-kind support value, so we could look at a dollar value associated with that. And the one, and I'd have to clarify
I'm assuming that would have to be on one of the county lots, not on the side of a street.
Yeah.
In a scenario.
Well, when I talked to Gordy, he was saying that possibly the lot over here, right?
Yeah, so we want to try and build in our parking lot, keep the pace with the road.
Dig it up, ear 'em up, right.
Yeah, so there's, so we're trying to look for a spot, like, maybe in here, this corner part of the spot where you're going to the utility pole. You can put a charger there without really disturbing the parking lot. And then there's another one in the lot, the other side, a century length, and then there's a lot or another utility pole in the corner of the bank lot. So there's several options that you may have something like that.
I was going to say, I don't necessarily want it in this parking lot, but if it's over there and it's accessible to the street so that they can get their, you know, advertising, I'm sure they're going to have big bold writing all over the side of this thing. Yeah, if it's over there on one side of the other of that street, I don't have any issues with it. I don't have any issues. I think, I think they've done it in, in Hood River, not that one, like a, in the last year, because
Yeah, and then they have
Somebody was saying, oh, they went and used
Veteran Service Office and, and the DOWs have one. And then they have several, and theirs is, there's a particular name of the program of the ones in the DOWs. And actually, that's kind of how they reached out to us, was one of our drivers that drives, casual drivers that lives over in Hood River that drives from Mount Adams, he was mentioning that he's used that electric car. He's done some testing with that to see the distance, because they did initially talk about that they had
What the range was.
Yeah, and they, they are going, they have been going more with the leaf that has a large, it has like a hundred and fifty mile range. I mean, because that's the issue too, is having sufficient range to make it worthwhile for people to use that.
The, the big thing I see here that's going to be the problem, and that's one thing I don't want the county to be, is the babysitter. Um, you know, if there's a designated parking spot for this vehicle, I'm assuming there'll be a signs up that says that spot is reserved for that vehicle. This is Goldendale, somebody else is going to park there. And then where does that car park when it gets back? And how does it get charged because somebody parked in that spot? And I don't want them complaining here and then you happen to go figure out who parked there and, you know?
Yeah, I mean, and basically Go4th has, they have their twenty-four-hour line, they have phone line, because they also have that ability if somebody doesn't have a smartphone. They do have a phone and in-person service that can talk to and they can do a arrangement for people to be able to get the vehicle and use like an RFI key. Otherwise, it is smartphone and capable, capable to completely do everything via the smartphone for using it. But, I mean, I'm sure there's always that possibility of, but we're not, we don't take on that management at all.
That's kind of what I wanted to check.
It's basically, we're providing, you know, all they're asking is like a letter of support, you know, to, on saying that we feel like, oh, this is a pretty good program to make some options available, because some of what they're, they've talked about too is sometimes different PDs, when people are maybe interested in considering buying an electric vehicle, they may want to just test, try one out and see really how they work first. And they would have that opportunity and they've done some kind of marketing things where it's been like, oh, you can do a free two-hour trial to see what you think and, and that too. But basically, the, the rentals is a four dollar an hour. Now that potentially could go up down the road if they're getting a lot of reservation, but they keep that lower rate for special service agencies and that too, when it's doing like a meal delivery or something like that, that they said they can look at agreeing, negotiating kind of that support.
Well, that'll be our new fleet of county vehicles. We'll just rotate them out, we're, nope, just, here's a, here's a smartphone.
So I wanted to, you know, find out if that was something you were good with moving forward, because again, we're not the applicant and that too, but we would be kind of indicating we're providing that in-kind, that space and the ability for them to put in the actual
What's White Salmon and Benjen doing? Are they doing a space on their city hall lot or something?
One's near, I have, I was
Or they designated a space on the street? They may be able to on their street because it's a city, they own the streets.
Well, they have one that's, I think, near the fire hall on Church Street was the location of one, and then, um
Because that's kind of ours. I just, I want to make sure that it's readily available, it's right next to the road, it isn't
Well, and they want it in an area that's
Primary parking, it's secondary parking.
Yeah.
Um, and it's not in our way at all.
But I don't
And again, I guess theoretically, we could have it over at the old Annex building if we
Well, and I thought too, they had talked kind of in, I don't know if one is going to be up by Rhine Village there or
Oh, interesting.
Or there, because I think there was some discussion of that before, but I don't know exactly where
You have a preference, Gordy, on whether it's over here in one of these two lots or over at Annex one?
Um, not really. I think the farther away from the village, like the dock, is better, so the corner of the bank lot would be
Probably the best, yeah, or the Annex lot.
Yeah.
So the City of Benjen ones, they're proposing that one on four hundred West Steuben, actually.
Oh, okay.
Over, I think by Dobbin's Beck Park is that direction?
So yeah, so what you need from us is a letter of support, which I'll sign.
Okay, and I mean, they'll draft kind of in terms of what that is and then potentially whether, you know, and we commit to that parking, dedicated parking space that has the ability for them to do the
With their electric
Charger station install. And then perhaps if we can determine a value of that, that would be helpful.
Then I would have them, I mean, I guess, work with Gordy to make sure we don't have to reinvent the wheel. We don't have to pave the parking lot and then rip it up again because they said yes a month later. I really don't want to rip it up again after the fact, but.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. Yep, that's all I have.
I'm going to go with it.
Oh, I didn't even notice he was back online again. He pops in and out as he flies through radio towers, I think.
Okay.
So you have three yeses.
Just your friendly ghost.
Thank you.
You're up there playing Top Gun, that's what you're doing. Alrighty. Um, we're probably still early. Oh, we're way early. Two forty-five is Goldendale City Council. You can, yeah, let's do consent and pay bills. I can send Dave a message and tell him we're early if he wants to get here early, if you want.
Yeah, we can pay bills right now. I'm probably going to lose service here shortly.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to first put my glasses on so I can read the numbers. Okay, I would make a motion to approve a council payable warrants, the amount of one million, five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars and two cents, no payroll benefit warrants for the date ending June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. My motion is to approve.
Second to motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second and a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, we have a three-person unanimous vote on that one.
Okay, and we have, uh, pastiment, you wish that as well?
Yes.
Okay, we have before us pastiment number two. This is a James Dean construction in the amount of nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty cents. This is for the Courtney Road Project CRP three forty-two and CRP three fifty-three. My motion is to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and a discussion on this one. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries unanimously again. Do you want to do the consent?
Okay, I just think it would, since we had a request that we should at least have some discussion on item eight, I'm fine with leaving it as far as I'm perfectly happy agreement. The agreement is a reimbursement agreement to be reimbursed for the processing of their request.
Yeah, I, I'm with you, I'll be standing in the hallway. Um, I'm with you, yeah, it's, it's a reimbursement agreement, just like every other reimbursement agreement in this county, nothing new, nothing special.
Yeah.
And just because you personally may or may not like a project, doesn't mean you get, we get to add stipulations or contracts into a basic general reimbursement agreement. So I'm fine with it the way it is.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda, all ten items.
Must have flew out of
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second and a discussion on the consent agenda. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I would say I agree with what you gentlemen just said about it being a reimbursement agreement.
Perfect, thank you.
Motion carries three ways unanimously. All right, are you ready or do you got friends and other people coming?
No, I'm ready whenever.
Step forward, sir. Next up is Goldendale City Council member Dave Jones to provide updates on the City of Goldendale's upcoming Community Days event and as well as a request from the commissioners for the next Time Council collection.
Well, thanks for having me. I appreciate it.
Gotcha.
I was gonna, can I come up and hand you guys some material?
Whatever you want to do, bud.
All right. I don't want to get tased.
Don't want us to push the secret button? Don't want us to push the secret button? The floor drops out right up here if we push the button.
Hey, Dave? If I could tase people, I would have.
Please, sir. Community Days.
Are you guys getting excited for Community Days?
I am.
Wait to hear about this stuff. Put one on there.
Yep.
All right, great.
Get my notes here. Well, great. Well, thanks for having me again. I appreciate it. Uh, I'm Dave Jones from the Goldendale City Council and just here to talk about Community Days a little bit. Uh, it's July 8th and 9th this year, Friday and Saturday. Uh, we're back to having it for two days. Last year, due to the pandemic, uh, we only had, uh, one day of Community Day. And the year before that, we didn't have Community Days at all. So, we're excited to get back into full motion with the Community Days and we got some new exciting stuff, uh, planned for this year. Uh, the event I'm here to talk about hit now is, uh, the Time Capsule Event. You know, uh, it'll be on the courthouse lawn on Friday, July 8th at 6:30 PM. And just to give you a little history behind the event, uh, Goldendale was founded in 1872, uh, which makes 2022 our sesquicentennial. Took me an hour to learn how to pronounce that. So that's the 150th anniversary. Now I'll give you a brief recap of every year since 1872 up until now. Now, no.
1872, Dave Sutter was.
We'll skip, uh, we'll skip to 1972. In 1972.
I was 30.
I was 2.
Anyways, uh, 1972 is the centennial and there was a big week-long celebration, uh, leading up to Community Days that year. Uh, ending in, they buried a time capsule on the courthouse lawn. And, uh, it was to be opened in 50 years, uh, for this year.
It wasn't an old fuel tank, was it?
It wasn't, it wasn't. You'll be.
That was a different time capsule.
It, it, it's gonna be a big surprise when you find out what that time capsule was made out of.
Oh, I know.
How we, you might know it. We dug it up and, uh, it was a big shock to everybody, what it was constructed out of. So, you'll have to wait and see. And we dug it up a couple of months ago and, uh, you know, cleaned everything up. Uh, we borrowed a nice display case from the Bickleton Museum that they had, uh, to display everything we got out of it. And so we're just gonna have a real good display set up there. There's gonna be, uh, all sorts of historical pictures. We're working with, uh, County Historical Society. Ken Marvel over there at the Presby has just made a great display of historical pictures to show off. And, you know, for the last 50 years, it's just gonna be a really nice display. And, and the big kicker is we're gonna bury a new time capsule, uh, to be opened in 50 years from now, in, uh, 2072. So put that on your calendars. Anyways, uh, we're looking for things to put in the new time capsule. Uh, I gave you guys a letter of, uh, you know, kind of what we had in mind and where our drop-off location is. If you wanna put something in it, you just gotta take it over to the library there. And, uh, anyway, we're gonna bury a new time capsule and we'll have a big display of that all laid out. And it'll just be a really fun event. We're gonna have, uh, a scavenger hunt for the kids that day where they, they'll, they'll start the scavenger hunt in the morning at the library and, uh, have all sorts of stops around historical areas in town to pick up puzzle pieces. And the winner of the scav- this, there'll be a bunch of prizes for the kids, uh, who participate in it. And the winner of the scavenger hunt gets to be mayor of Goldendale for the day. So they'll get to go down to City Hall and, uh, we'll have a little thing for them there.
Interesting.
Yeah, it'll be fun. Um, so anyway, I will have free ice cream. Yeah, so think of something cool to put in it, you know, while, it could be something simple as, uh, an agenda of a meeting or who knows, uh, possibly, we got a lot of room left in it. It's a big time capsule. Uh, we got a, a new monument being constructed right now that will cover it. Uh, the old monument, if you ever noticed that there was a big concrete slab over the top of it and we tore that all out of it and we'll have a brand-new monument made to put over the top of it uh, with our logo that we came up with and Pioneer Rocket Monument, local company is, uh, making it for us. And it'll look really nice, uh, thanks to the county Public Works Department for working with us on that. Uh, they've been really great helping out on that. There'll be a Native American exhibit going on, uh, all weekend on the courthouse lawn. Uh, from what I understand, they'll have some teepees set up and, uh, a nice display of, uh, Native American stuff there.
So the plan is to do like you had last year where Community Days is mainly on Main Street.
Yeah.
And then this'll be Indian Village teepee type stuff over here, right?
Yeah, there'll be other things also. We'll have the, uh, bouncy houses for the kids and the rock climbing wall and, uh, other various, I think there'll be some food vendors there. But, uh, most of it's gonna be on Main Street. Of course, they'll have the car show and, uh, other things on the east and the main street also. So I don't know, I've always loved Community Days. I was born here. I've, uh, loved it ever since I was a little kid and I'm excited to be on the planning end of it here. So yeah, we're really excited about it and hope, uh, we get you guys to attend and put some stuff in it and we're gonna have a really good time.
Well, I'm definitely gonna be attending. I don't know about putting stuff in the time capsule. I gotta think of something to give it. I would give it my sanity, but I lost that and I can't find it. So.
Yeah. Think about it, you got until June 25th to get something entered in it. We got, we got some room left. We got some really cool stuff going in it there. Um, but lots of possibilities.
I say, to me, it's, it's, I wanna see the, the kid stuff. I wanna see kinda what the kids put in it, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
They're the ones that are gonna be here maybe when it gets dug up.
No doubt.
Yeah, interesting.
Well, good, well, that's all I had. Appreciate the time.
Well, thank you, sir.
I better not stick around too long. I'm parked in the 30-minute parking spot.
Yep, there you go.
I've only been here for 15 or so minutes, I'm all right. I don't know if you have people patrolling that.
No, that's me, Ben, no.
Okay.
Not on Tuesdays, not on Tuesdays. All right, thank you, sir.
All great, I sure appreciate it. Thank you. All right, you guys too. Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Ooh, ice cream social. Interesting, okay. Any new business? Unfinished business or board pending you wanna chat about? We haven't already chatted about?
I have nothing for right now.
Yeah.
I don't see anything on my list either. Um, do we have the prosecutor at all or Rebecca on the phone? Do they have anything they want to bring up? I'm gonna take that as a note. So with that, I would, uh, entertain a motion if you so deem it.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to adjourn the regular, um, meeting. We have no workshop scheduled, uh, this week.
I would, I would second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Wow, we're outta here early.
Meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Tune in next week when we.
Have a good day, everybody.
We do, sir.